It's time to call to order the regular meeting of McAllister City Council Tuesday, June 25. And echo and back there, very, very commanding sounding voice. We have Koby Clapp from Maine and Oklahoma Church of Christ here to lead us in the pledge and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please pray with me. Your Father, we ask your blessing tonight upon this city, upon the leaders, upon those that live and work here, upon those that, Father, just are trying to get by and trying to succeed. We ask your blessing upon these men and women here tonight, who are the servants of this community, renew that spirit of service within them, Father, and give them wisdom and help them determine and discuss, Father, with the pursuit of justice and the love of mercy. Bless us tonight, bless these that are participating in this meeting tonight, and, Father, help it to be a meeting of respect, of diligence, and, Father, one that glorifies you. In Christ name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor. Corr, would you call it all, please?
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
Mayor?
Here. We're on to citizens comments on non-agenda items. Residents may address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda. Residents must provide their name and address. Council requests that comments be limited to five minutes. We did not have anybody sign up. I don't see anybody moving to the microphone, so we will move on to consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted in one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item maybe will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. The agenda tonight consists of A, approval of claims for June 5, 2019 through June 18, 2019; B, consider an act upon approval and authorization of the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with David T. Hardgrave, LLC, as pre-treatment management consultant within the City of McAllister Pre-Treatment Program; C, consider an act upon a request for the temporary installation of a trailer to be used as mobile offices or classrooms for public health, safety, and educational purposes, a property located at 600 West Madison Avenue, described as lots 1 through 6, block 230, and the closed alley line therein, South McAllister, Pittsburgh County, State of Oklahoma; D, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to ratify and approve an agreement between the City of McAllister and Megapath for providing local and long-distance calling services; E, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between BizTele Communications, LLC and the City of McAllister to maintain service, maintain and service all 1- and 2-line non-system telephones and associated wiring owned by the City of McAllister within various locations of the City of McAllister; F, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between BizTele Communications, LLC and the City of McAllister to maintain and service Samsung Telephone System, KSU, and IP telephone sets prior to 6/30/14, warranty has expired; G, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between BizTele Communications, LLC and the City of McAllister to maintain and service Samsung Office Serve 7100 Digital Telephone System and IDCS Telephone Sets located at the main fire station, 607 Village Boulevard; H, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to approve and ratify the annual business customer service agreement between the City of McAllister and US Cellular for wireless telecommunications services and equipment; I, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign a lease with Miller Office Equipment for three copiers; J, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign a maintenance agreement with Miller Office Equipment for 10 copiers; K, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to ratify the renewal of the contract for City Attorney with Urban and Urban Attorneys, LLP; L, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to issue a notice to proceed with binding coverage for excess workers' compensation, insurance, and safety, National Casualty Corporation; M, concur with the mayor's reappointments of Robert Way and Larry Walla to Housing Authority for terms to expire March 31, 2023; N, concur with the mayor's appointment, reappointment of Rod Canterbury to the Pittsburgh County Regional Expo Authority for a term to expire June 30, 2023; O, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement for the 2019 Junior Sun Belt Classic between McAllister Public Schools and the City of McAllister for funding in the amount of $15,000. All right. Would anybody like anything removed? I'll take a motion in a second to approve.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion, Councilman Brown, second to Vice Mayor Stevens. Any discussion? Corr, would you call it all, please?
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We are now on to a public hearing, which we have, we have five this tonight. All persons interested in any ordinance listed under Schedule Business shall have an opportunity, we heard in accordance with Article 2, Section 212B of the City Charter. The first is final performance report for fiscal year 16, CDBG, number 16765, CDBG ED16, purchase of industrial building projects serving Krebs Brewing Company. Next is final performance report on fiscal year 17, number 17033, CDBG grant, waterline replacement project, Fifth and Short, East Park Avenue and North 14th Street. Next is fiscal year 2019, CDBG grant, sewer line replacement project, Street, A Street to Elm Street, between Miami Avenue and Creek Avenue. Next is an ordinance enacting the Five Broadband LLC Cable Television System Permit Agreement, granting to Five Broadband LLC and its successors an assigns the right and privilege to construct, erect, operate, modify, and maintain in, upon, along, across, above, over, and under the streets, alleys, easements, and other public ways and places within the City of McAllister such facilities necessary for the operation and maintenance of a cable television system in the city, requiring the company to strictly comply with the provisions of the ordinance. I don't have the ordinance number in there.
Let me get that.
Okay.
We have not assigned an ordinance number 2.
Is that an issue? Okay, ordinance number to be determined, and the permit agreement declaring an emergency. The fourth is an ordinance amending Chapter 106 Utilities, Article 4, Division 2, Municipal Collection Service, Section 106-364, charges for removal of permissible solid waste and declaring an emergency. And fifth is an ordinance to amend Sections 54-44, 54-45, 54-47, and 54-51 to Article 3, Chapter 54 of the Code of the City of McAllister, Oklahoma, by prohibiting possession of tobacco products and prohibiting tobacco use and vapor products on city-owned premises or operated properties. I'll take a motion in a second to open that. Motion, Vice Mayor Stevens. Second, Councilman Brown. Any discussion? Corr, would you call it all, please?
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, so we're now in a public hearing. If anyone would like to address the first, the first issue, seeing no one. Anyone like to address the second issue, seeing no one. Anyone like the third issue, fourth, and fifth, seeing no one. I would take a motion in a second to close public hearing. Motion, Vice Mayor Stevens. Second, Councilwoman Harrison. Any discussion? Corr, would you call it all, please?
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number one, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign a resolution approving CDBG grant, 16765, CDBG ED16, accepting the project as complete. Mr. Stasiak or Ms. Vance?
Ms. Vance.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you tonight.
We are to a point with this particular project, better and locally known as the CDBG EDIF, Krebs Brewing Industrial Building Acquisition Project. To date, the building was purchased, all grant monies are spent, all matching money is spent, the project is ready for closeout. The company has created, we've tracked 33 jobs to date, they had committed to 30 jobs in their application, they have spent their nearly million-dollar investment by the company. And so at this point, this resolution is to move forward with the closeout. Authorize your mayor to sign those documents.
Counselor Reed?
Millie, how did you verify the, the number of jobs and the percentage of those that were filled with low or moderate income persons?
We have forms provided by the Department of Commerce that are attached to the employment applications. Each applicant fills that out, signs that. It's a paper that they sign off on. It states number in the household and gives a range of yearly income above or below a certain amount. For an example, a family of one might be $31,000, family of four about $45,000. And so it's just a checkbox that they sign, and then those are turned in to me, and we track those jobs on a job tracking log. They're sent in with quarterly reports to the Department of Commerce.
Any other questions or comments? Take a motion in a second to approve. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Reed. Any discussion? Corr, would you call it all, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Stevens?
Same.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries, I'm sorry. Okay, we're on to agenda item number two, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign a resolution approving CDBG grant, 17033, and accepting the project as complete. You're up again.
Once again, a closeout resolution to be this board's formal statement. The project is completed, all grant matching funds are expended, the project objectives were met, it did serve the primarily low-moderate-income households, and we do have a copy of a certificate of completion from the project engineer, so it's ready to move forward with closeout.
Any questions?
Mayor, I want.
Councilman Brown?
These jobs, are they online, or how do they, how do people go about acquiring these jobs?
On this particular item, it's not job-related, but moving back to the previous item, those jobs are posted by the company. They do advertise locally for those jobs, and they work with the, you know, employment offices, and, and then there's also things at the state level for, for jobs, opportunities that they look at.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Harrison?
One question, was it mainly locals that did apply, or were there people from out of town, out of state?
Locals.
Okay, are we, what, when you say locals, do you mean like Pittsburgh County or?
Yes, within this area, and with a good number from McAllister.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed. Any further discussion? Corr, would you call it all, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. On to agenda item number three, consider an act upon adopting the citizen participation plan for fiscal year 2019, CDBG project.
Citizen participation plan is a plan that the city adopts with each CDBG each year that you have a CDBG project. In a nutshell, it just encourages participation from your local public, and that's done by posting public hearing notice, notices at least 10 days in advance. We hold two public hearings, one during the application phase, one during the closeout phase, to let people know how money was expended, and then it also authorizes the mayor to sign grant application paperwork.
Any questions? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed. Any further discussion? Corr, would you call it all, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. On to agenda item number four, consider an act upon adopting a resolution to apply for fiscal year 2019, CDBG grant.
This resolution is the board's formal statement that you do want to make an application for 2019 CDBG grant funds. This year, the grant funding would be in the amount of $137,902, with matching funds in that same amount from the city. This resolution says that it's federal money that originates at HUD. It is passed through the Oklahoma Department of Commerce and on to municipalities. It says that because it's federal money, it has some federal rules and regulations attached to it, and should the city receive these grant funds, then you'll abide by those rules and regulations. Your formal statement that you want to make this application.
Vice Mayor Stevens?
And this might be a question too, to follow up with you as well, Pete. So the CDBG grants, those can be used for more than what we are using them for currently, correct?
They can be used for any number of things, as long as the area served meets the low-moderate income requirement, and as long as it's an eligible activity to the program.
Now, there, this is also available for housing and different things outside of what we typically use it for, correct?
They moved housing over to Oklahoma Housing Finance Agency. So CDBG is really not doing housing now. But it could do, of course, water and sewer projects, it could do things like purchase fire truck, provided that the entire city met low-moderate income requirements. What we find is, is that normally in a larger city, on a citywide basis, the entire city does not benefit or meet the low-mod income requirements, but in target neighborhoods and areas, it does, and so quite often, that's why we go with water and sewer.
Gotcha. Is there stormwater plans that could be adopted through something like this as well?
You could do drainage projects, but as far as actual plans, that's not eligible.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Who makes the determination as to what ward or district receives the funding?
Well, in the case of McAllister, and we've seen this over years past, you have wards some that will qualify for it, some that will not, and so because there's a requirement of the program that whatever area you're serving meets is 51% low-mod income, that kind of narrows things down. Although, you know, a broad statement would be, CDBG can benefit the entire community, but does that entire community meet the low-moderate income requirement of 51%? So often, it's determined and driven by that, also input from the staff and that type thing.
Is this for one year?
Yeah, one year. One year. City's eligible to apply for this each year, provided you keep moving and closing grants out.
Thank you.
Counselor Smith?
So what is the low to moderate income, 51%?
Fifty, yes, 51% of the project has to serve, or the project has to serve 51% low-mod income households, and those limits for Pittsburgh County, a family of one, about 32,000, I think it's actually 31,750, and it goes up a little bit, a family of four would be about 45,000. So your households have to be, 51% of them have to be below those income limits.
Thanks.
Hours tend to be third ward and fifth ward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I can motion to approve. Okay, sir, a second. Second, Councilman Smith, any further discussion? Corr, would you call it all, please?
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. On to agenda item number five, consider an act upon adopting a resolution on letting matching funds for fiscal year 2019, CDBG sewer line replacement project.
With this resolution, you will be committing the amount of $137,902 to this grant project, sewer project, and we will be getting that same amount of, of grant funds, of CDBG grant funds. Monies will actually be expended in this next budget year.
Any questions? Just wanted, this is, this is the, the project in Conley addition, isn't it? The sewer lines in Conley addition?
I believe so. Is this over in Conley addition, the one that we're moving? No, that one's under construction for 2018.
This will be, this will be.
A Street to Elm, between Miami and Creek, I think it's actually Ward 3.
Yeah, that's 2018. We get all that stuff.
I'm good with it. Any other questions? Take a motion in a second. A motion, Vice Mayor Stevens, second, Councilman, second, Councilman Smith. Any further discussion? Corr, would you call it all, please?
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. On to agenda item number six, consider an act upon adopting a residential anti-displacement plan for fiscal year 2019, CDBG sewer line replacement project.
Each year that you have a CDBG project, one of the requirements, this is one of those federal requirements that we talked about, we have to have an anti-displacement plan on file. We know that as a result of replacing existing sewer line, we're not going to relocate or move anyone out of their homes, but remember, this money originates at HUD, which stands for Housing and Urban Development. So their big emphasis is on housing projects, but this is one of those regulations that passes on to everything. You always want to talk about this on the front end of a project, and if we had to have, if we had a situation where we needed to relocate somebody, a particular project, then we would want to know about it now, because your plan says then that you would provide for replacement housing. But in this particular case, we just have the plan on file, we are not going to relocate any persons.
Any questions? Counselor Harrison?
So are you saying that eminent domain is not part of what you're doing? Is this, is this what?
That's, that's correct. We weren't, we will not be doing condemnation and, and relocation of persons out of their homes.
Okay, and what is the determining factor as to what house or what person will be moved? Did the person apply for it, or do you, do we ask them, or what? How does that work?
We are just making the, the statement that we are not going to do that. Our plan is that we are not going to do that, because we are only replacing sewer lines that are already there. We're not going to be doing any work on houses, and so in this particular case, you think, well, it seems like a wild idea to have to have this plan, but it's one of those federal requirements that, that the program requires. So the plan is that we don't intend to, we're not going to relocate any persons out of their homes with this particular grant project, but we still have to have the plan on file.
Now, does this include apartments or duplexes, or just strictly?
Just the sewer lines. Out in existing city easements.
Okay.
Utility easements.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed. Any further discussion? Corr, would you call it all, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. On to agenda item number seven, approval and reading of the 2019 Fair Housing Proclamation, which reads, pursuant to the authority granted to me as mayor of the City of McAllister, I do hereby proclaim that the City of McAllister supports and encourages fair housing practices. Further, I decree that the city affirms to follow the concepts, practice, and intent embodied by federal, state, and local laws in regard to fair housing. The Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing because of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, sexual orientation, gender identity, disability, or any other characteristic protected by law. The City of McAllister encourages each citizen, agency, lender, or real estate business planning, housing promotions, promotions or activities to implement the provisions of the Fair Housing Act. So I take a motion in a second to approve that. Motion, Vice Mayor Stevens, second, Councilman Reed. Any discussion? Corr, would you call it all, please?
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. On to agenda item number eight, consider an act upon approval and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Millie Vance Incorporated to prepare fiscal year 2019 CDBG grant application and administer the project. This is just our contract with you each year for, for handling the CDBG?
It is, yes.
Are there any questions?
Mayor? I'd just like to state that I believe Ms. Vance does an excellent job administering these, these grants, and the small amount of money we pay her is well worth, well worth the money.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Vice Mayor Stevens, second, Councilman Reed. Any discussion? Corr, would you call it all, please?
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Vance.
Thank you all.
We're on to agenda item number nine, review and act upon fiscal year 19, end-of-year report presented by the Oklahoma Small Business Development Center.
I'd like to thank the council for having me here. I'd like to thank Christian Booth for being here from Eastern. She's a vice president of student and external affairs. I got that title right. All right, so I'd like to apologize, Dana won't be here with us. She had an accident and had surgery yesterday, so we're wishing her a speedy recovery. So we'll go ahead and get into this. I'm not going to read it to you. You guys have had it. If you guys have any questions or need me to answer any questions, just feel free to interrupt me and let me know. So, as you can see, this is our mission statement, vision, and here is our number, our advising numbers, years of this year compared to last year for this time period. As you can see, this year, we have 84 clients with 457 advising hours, four business starts, seven new jobs created, two jobs retained, 209,000 in loans, 194,000 in individual investment, 404 in total, in just total capital, and we've increased sales by 372,000 with 23 long-term clients. As the council requested last time, we've separated out McAllister and Pittsburgh County, and I'd like to make a note that in the Pittsburgh County numbers, McAllister is included in that number, so they're not too separate. So the 31 clients served in McAllister are part of the 42 clients. So McAllister is the majority of the clients that we've served in the Pittsburgh County area. We've had one business start, we've created three jobs, two jobs retained, and had capital investment of 107,000. And what we mean by jobs retained is when we work with a company that was on the verge of closing, or they were going to have to let go of those employees, when we can step in and save those jobs through various means of cash flow management, marketing, increase in sales, that's how we come up with jobs retained, and these numbers all have to be individually attributed to us by the clients. So as, I'm happy to say that Pittsburgh County is now the number one county in our four-county consortium. We have 18 active clients in the county. So in the past, we've been near the bottom, so I'm glad to know that we're now at the top, and I hope to keep on increasing that.
Most other?
We're a statewide organization, so my, we work on expertises as well, such as my expertise is in real estate and agriculture, and Dana's is in healthcare and agro tourism. So if another client, say in Woodward, our advisor in Woodward, has a client that has healthcare questions, that has those very specific needs in that field, our advisor in Woodward can reach out to Dana, and she can help them in that field, and we count those hours. So it just on, when people need very specific industry help, we reach out to other advisors to get help.
Okay.
So you can see a breakdown of the types of industries we work with. We have a lot in the retail space and food services. We have a lot in the retail space and food services. The amount of full-time employees, part-time, the annual sales of all clients. This is a breakdown of our clients by age of the firm. All the times people think we only work with startup businesses, but as you can see, we do work with a lot of startup businesses, but there's quite, we have a wide spectrum of the businesses. We have 50-plus years, years on there and their annual sales employees. These are our main areas of advising. When people come in, this is what is most requested. You can see that startup is a major part, marketing and sales. A lot of people come in to help get their website up to date, make sure they're reaching out on social media the right way. And we've actually had a push on sources of capital, which I'll get into later. Here's some of our events that we've been holding. We've had an audience of 150 people over 10 events. And the reason it says 62 attendees, we consider an attendee as a business. So our clients are the actual business and many of those businesses bring in multiple people to come get instruction. And, and we've had 12 public speaking engagements. I recently completed a certification to become an innovation technology advisor. And Dana completed her course to become an economic developments, development finance professional. And we've done, I'm, Dana's attended some healthcare seminars to keep up to date on, because that's an ever-changing field. And I'm working on helping some of our files get up to date so that we can help banks get loans pushed through the SBA. So here's some of our upcoming events. As you can see, over the next two months, we have four events coming up in McAllister, a tax workshop, a business start workshop, and then they repeat again the following month. Here's some of our around the states. It's, they're just other advisors around that, because we work as a team. I wanted to show that we have other advisors. We have in the top left, we have Jay Goolsbee, who used to be an SBA lender. He's really helped us get on board with being able to push through and he's helping me get those SBA documents ready. So I wanted to let you guys know some of the other things we've been doing. We recently hosted a lenders lunch-in that we gathered all of the commercial lenders in the McAllister area and held a lunch-in at the college and went over the services we provide and what we can provide to them to make their lives as easy as possible. So we're, we've heard very good feedback from that and we're hoping to see more referrals from that. So that's it. Is there any questions?
You said there was one business started and it was in Pittsburgh County specifically, McAllister?
Yes.
Can you tell us what business that was?
We have a certain confidentiality. They have to sign releases to be able to do that.
Good, go ahead. Could you tell us the benefits of small business administration? Is it located in KTC Commerce and Technology?
No, I'm located in the Eastern Campus here in McAllister. And my colleague Dana is in the Eastern Campus in Wilberton. We help businesses with all aspects of business. We help get them started with marketing plans, business plans, financial projections. We have access to certain industry research to make sure that there are, their projections are with industry trends. So we really help businesses with anything that they need help with. And like I said, we have advisors all throughout the state. So if they need, even need industry-specific help, because we can, all can't be experts in every different field. We're all certified business experts, but we can't be experts in every field. So we have access to help in almost any way that they need.
Is there a fee to?
No, it, no, it is free, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Those companies, do the companies have to have so many employees for you guys? So if you had an ice cream shop and you had two people working, they, that would qualify?
Even if they just had the idea that they wanted to open an ice cream shop, they can come and see me and we can help them get where they have the idea to starting the business.
Okay, thank you.
How do they, how do they contact you?
I have brochures out in the lobby. They can go to OKSBDC.org. Or they can come just to visit me at the McAllister campus. I'm in room 223. I'd love to see people coming and visit me, so. Also, the Chamber of Commerce has all my information.
Anyone else? Thank you. You guys do a great job. I've had two businesses that you worked with contact me and said that, one of them said they wouldn't be in business without you. Did a fantastic job. We're on to agenda item number 10. Consider an act upon approval of an ordinance and cable television permit with Vibe Broadband, a limited liability corporation.
This is.
Mr. Irvin, your name is on it. We can tag team it if you'd like. Just a brief explanation. This is the Vibe Broadband Ordinance that we've been working on for some time with the general counsel for Vibe. And we've, I think it's ready for your consideration. We changed the format from a, it was like a 21-page ordinance and we've adopted the format, formatting that Oklahoma City had, which was to make it a ordinance, two or three-page ordinance incorporating a permit agreement. And the permit agreement is, I think, it looks like we've still got the same page numbering, but it's, the agreement is more like 18 pages. So the, it is a five-year contract with Vibe to provide television services to the city. All the details are, are really included in the agreement. I was concerned with the fact that it was a five-year contract with a right to extend it for five years to make sure that we did not include any financial obligation on the city. Because if we did, then it would have to be a one-year contract with a right to re, to renew if there was mutual consent. But we've included a provision with Vibe's agreement. And I think it's on, it's on page 11 of 18 that this, other than there is one provision in, in the contract that would provide for a financial obligation to the city. If we took some action that required Vibe to relocate and they incurred expense, then we would be responsible for the relocation expense. But we've added that reference and we've said that in order to be valid, it has to be encumber revenues, current revenues, and cannot be incurred or paid from the city except from current revenue, which is our obligation. That's our, that's a state constitutional provision that says you can't obligate future revenue. So hopefully that addition and the other provisions that were holding up, and I know this has taken several months to come to some agreement. But the, they have a, this is much a creature of federal regulation, federal communications commission regulation. And they have pending from the Sixth Circuit Federal Court of Appeals, a decision that says they can no longer provide free service. They have to provide in-kind service that is deducted from our 5% and our revenue from this service is capped at 5% of their gross revenue annually. And they're to pay it monthly. But what we've done is on page 14, I believe it is, we've said they will continue to provide free service. We have limited it to eight locations. I think in the original contract, it was like 12 or more locations. Some of them included schools, county schools and such. We've eliminated all those and come down to eight city locations, which are listed on a schedule to the permit agreement. And it's basically the same ones that they were providing free service to before. And they will continue providing free service for the time being until they receive that decision from the Sixth Circuit Federal Appeals Court. And if the, if the decision of the lower court is upheld, which says it's a deduction of in-kind service from your allowance. So for right now, there is no change other than reducing the number of stations that they provide for. And so I think those were the changes, the main changes in the permit. And it has taken several months to get those approved, or I'm hoping they're approved. They have not signed this agreement. We told them this was what we were going to present to you. And then once you've approved it, it will be presented to them for their approval. And so I'm anticipating that they will approve it. There is no compensation in here for broadband services. It does not, it does not cover broadband services. It covers television services only. And apparently that, that is not an item that is permitted under federal law to be charged for, even though there may be some use. Apparently there's little or no, no use of our facilities. But this, this is a matter of federal law that this permit agreement replaces the old franchise elections that we used to see 20, 30, 40 years ago, where PSO and everybody had to have a franchise election every so many years. And back then, I think it was like 20 or 30 years terms, you know, the citizens and re-approved the use of the public ways by these companies to locate their lines and their pipes and whatever. And so this is the replacement. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Well, what does that fee amount to annually?
I think it's about 25. Well, it changes every quarter, so. What is the annual amount that you?
Our growth in McAllister has been climbing, so.
I need you to come up and mic phone please.
So over the, you know, the past few years, you know, our customer base was in decline. But currently we've been steady or above the last five years or so numbers. So as for a dollar total, I didn't come prepared for that.
We don't know how much we make out of this fee?
Well, we do.
We do.
But it's unknown at this point.
It's probably in the range of about $75,000 annually.
That's, that's why.
We get a fee on the TV, but not on the broadband.
And we never have received anything on broadband, Councilman.
Always been a video product.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Of course, I had to listen to the council very. So five years were locked in. And then we decided to leave after two years, we had to pay them money because that or they had to.
Or no, no financial obligation for the city.
So we, if they, we had to cut the contract? Okay, so we don't have any cost at all, period?
I'm assuming that that relocation cost, if we took some action, if we invalidated this contract within the term of the contract, that would relocate, that would cause a relocation.
Yeah, it's money somewhere involved.
We would be responsible for that relocation cost, but it would have to be paid from current revenue.
So if I understand, relocation means if the city did something that forced you to move some of your equipment or equipment, that's what we're talking about?
Right. Correct. So, so like if you closed an easement that we were using and, and had us relocate to a different location, then that would want to be one of the. Which we normally follow power easements anyway, so.
Are you guys set up, oh man, are you guys set up throughout which part of state? Holdenville, Wauka, Seminole?
Correct. We have 32 communities in eastern Oklahoma. We actually have a fiber route that leaves Shawnee, Oklahoma, comes down through Holdenville, into McAllister, up around through to Fort Gibson, all the way to Grand Lake, and then crossed through Tulsa back into Shawnee.
Vice Mayor Stevens?
So if I'm understanding correctly, then Mr. Irvin, we're on a five-year contract with them? With an option for an additional five years to renew?
Yes, that's correct.
And whose, whose option is that? Is that strictly Vibe's or is that strictly us or is it mutually?
I think it's, I'd have to look and see, but it's under the term under Article One. And it's. I think it is mutual.
Then my, my next question is, so we had 12 locations that were free at the moment, depending on the circuit. Why did we reduce it down to eight?
Those are city locations. The rest of them are school. One was Haywood School and the McAllister Public Schools and all that.
Did we let, did we let the school system know that we weren't going to be including?
Councilman, I spoke with the superintendent and he had no problems with this.
I mean with Haywood as well and things like that too.
Just, I strictly stayed with McAllister. Haywood was the only one outside of the McAllister School District.
Schools, facilities are included in our contract at, at the beginning anyway, but. And they, their initial position was, and they sent me the regulation, the FCC regulation that said they wouldn't provide free service. And that's what's pending and before the court. Has been pending for some time now. But it's likely that within that five years, it's going to come down. And if it does, they can't provide free service, then we'll have to have in-kind service, which will be a deduction from the 5%, 5%.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman Brown?
So we're looking at basically 10 years. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, I think 10 years, but I don't think the council want to revisit this issue for anytime soon. It took us almost a year.
Yeah, I understand that, but I just don't understand why we can't. It don't seem like it's just one, it's like buying, having one car dealer, and then everybody buying that one car dealer.
Well, I think the, the realization is that we are a small market. We started with Cox, then we went to Allegiance, then we went to Vive. And so I think that's it. Now, there are some competing systems in the, this area of the state. And we did solicit permit agreements from those facilities, but for the most part, it is Vive.
And it's, it's not exclusive. I mean, you can grant a video franchise to any, anybody you want.
The only provision in the agreement is that if you do that, it is a non-exclusive agreement. But if you do that, then you will have to provide the same thing, same conditions that you do to new. Service to Vive.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Cannot foresee that we would have competing cable services here in town.
No, I haven't seen it in a long time.
So not cheap to put in a system, I'm guessing?
No, I'm sure it's not. What does it cost to put one in, you know?
Oh, it's, it's aerial construction is about thirty-two thousand dollars a mile. Underground's close to fifty.
I did find it is mutually, mutually agreed on that condition.
I do expect them to approve it when we submit it to them.
Yes, it is. It, it's, it's already went through all the process.
Anyone else? Take the motion in a second to approve. Motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith. Any further discussion? Corge Colerole, please.
Thank you.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Thank you, guys. We're on to agenda item number eleven, consider an act upon amending solid waste ordinance, section one oh six dash three six four to reflect the three and a half percent increase from the Public Services Incorporated in residential and commercial rates listed. Mr. Stazak?
Actually, this is Ann Chin or Ms. Irvin, who will be presenting this item. Or maybe I was supposed to do it.
Maybe.
No one's, no one stands up here, my go-to.
Okay, you know, I can take it.
Mayor, Councilman. This is our, we, we have agreement to, for solid waste, this is our solid waste ordinance and the fee attached to it. This year, we haven't changed the rates for our sanitation pickup for five years. And this year, again, we are maxed out at the three point five percent increase with our contract. And this is passing that on to our current rates. And the ordinance is attached, and I do want to point out that this ordinance has an emergency clause, that we cannot have an emergency clause on fees, so it will have to be effective date, I, I suggest August the first, because it has to be at least thirty days. But if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. But as you can see where we've changed the ordinance, that's where we've changed the rates. This also has each July first, thereafter, the changes are underlined. Any rate increases shall be equivalent to those adjustments stated within the contract. Each, each year, we've had an increase, but we haven't increased the, the rates for our citizens accordingly. Our water rates go up, and this is a calculation based on the same type of C P I calculations that our water and sewer rates go up. And like I said, in the past, we have not passed these on. I think we've changed them once every five years, and so we've absorbed those, those rates. But this is a change, and this is what our staff is, is recommending.
Vice Mayor Stevens?
I just have one question. So on one oh six dash three six four, it says removal, removal of permissible solid waste from single-family dwelling duplex and/or apartment church per month. Is that saying that a duplex, they're paying eighteen ninety-nine for one for a duplex? Or is that each side?
In our ordinances in other places, and this is kind of pointing it out, each dwelling, each family is, is a charge. Because they, they get the services, if, if, if it's a duplex, for example, the duplex has trash cans for this side and this side, so it should be separately built. Is that what you're asking?
Something along those lines. So if there's, let's say that there's just one trash can there, then there, it's one service where there's only one meter there, are they, are you charging for each side for a trash can?
We should be.
Is that the city policy right now?
That's what our, yes, that's how, that's how they define residence in our, in our other ordinances. It's not, I mean, this is our garbage ordinance, but in our water and sewer ordinance is it has that a resident is defined by, and a duplex would count as two.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Smith?
I'm the next to the last page there. I'm trying to figure out, you know, if you have two polycarts, what's this? It's got polycard, does that mean polycard two costs this much? What's the difference, what's the city and Republic?
Councilman, that eighteen dollars and twenty-six cents is the same price paid for two, for two polycarts. You can have two at your home for the same price of one.
Yes.
It doesn't, you don't incur an additional cost until you ask for a third polycard.
So the cost should be twenty-six seventy-seven a month?
What are you looking at?
I'm looking at this chart here, you know, the matrix that has all the different things listed. It's got polycard, one pickup a week, twenty-six seventy-seven.
The, the twenty-six is a commercial rate. I know that the.
So that's all commercial, all that stuff? And this thing that you just told me about, that's for residential? So you get two for eighteen twenty-six?
Yes.
Is that right? Thank you.
Well, it'll be eighteen ninety going forward, if this is, if this is approved.
It'll be eighteen ninety. The new rate will be eighteen ninety.
Per resident.
Thank you.
Just making sure, Councilman Smith is done?
I got it.
Got it.
I got it here.
So Ms. Irvin?
Yes.
So if they decide they want the second cart, what do they call?
Usually, well, the customer service line, usually Republic puts it out. If you put an extra bag out every week, if you have one trash can, they will give you a second automatically. They do not want to get out of the car and, a truck and pick up this. Okay. So Republic in our contract, actually, they get to make that choice to give you the second polycard for free.
Okay, thank you.
Well, for no additional cost.
This, this might be for you, it might be for Mr. Stazak, it doesn't really have to do with the increase, but a lot of people don't know that they can have a bulk pickup?
Yes.
Is it once or twice a year?
Twice.
Twice. It can't, it isn't always immediate, because they have to have a certain number of them hit from the city to do that, but you can sign up in our customer service late week.
Right, and they'll contact you when, when to have it out at the curb?
Exactly.
And what's a smoke pickup mean?
An old couch? Or an old chair, or, yeah.
A mattress, car.
Well.
Whatever they can get out there.
I'm guessing would, pickup is something you actually have to be able to pick up.
Has to be able to put in a pickup.
Any other, any other questions, comments? I need a, a motion to approve with the date of August first as the initial date?
Yes.
Yes, motion, Councilman Smith, did you second that, Councilman Reed? Second, Councilman Reed. Any further discussion? Corge Colerole, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Yes, and the motion carries. On to agenda item number twelve, consider.
Excuse me, there, there is an emergency on item number ten.
Ten?
Yeah, I don't know if.
Okay, I didn't have any agenda.
Yeah, it's part of the ordinance.
Okay. In that case, we will, we will go back to item number ten. It had an emergency clause attached to it, which if you don't, if you don't know what that means, it means it takes effect immediately instead of thirty days from now. So take a motion in a second to approve the emergency, motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith. Any discussion? Corge Colerole, please.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Okay, we're on to agenda item number twelve, consider an act upon an ordinance amending sections fifty-four dash forty-four, fifty-four dash forty-five, fifty-four dash forty-seven, fifty-four dash fifty-one to Article Three, Chapter fifty-four of the Code of the City of McAllister, Oklahoma, by prohibiting possession of tobacco product and prohibiting tobacco use of vapor products on city-owned premises or operated properties.
Mayor and council, what you have before you is an update to our tobacco ordinance. I believe the original was adopted in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, and the upgrades that before you are recommendations from the Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust. Just making sure that our ordinance is in line with the most recent recommendations for the health and safety of our citizens and employees. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
This is essentially just adding vaping, isn't it?
Pretty much, and then just clarifying some language and making sure that we are also staying in line with state law. And so this does say that if the state were to enact any new laws, that ours would automatically adopt those changes concerning state properties and those sorts of things. Yes, Councilman?
Okay, quick question, Stephanie, pursuant to medical marijuana, is that part of this too?
No, ma'am, it's not.
Oh, okay, so in other words, they, people can use that in, in these areas or not?
I believe state law would cover any of those issues.
No, we have an ordinance that prohibits use in public, public places or city property.
Okay, so are you saying that that is part of this, that they can't, people cannot use that?
No, it's not part of this.
It's not, it's a separate.
It's in a separate ordinance.
Thank you.
Good question.
Anyone else? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Brown, second, Councilwoman Harrison. Any discussion? Corge Colerole, please.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries on to agenda item number thirteen, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign the work order for professional services with Infrastructure Solutions LLC for engineering services required for the twenty nineteen C D B G sewer project.
Mayor, council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. This is just a continuation of all our C D B G application process, and this will allow us to do the engineering work to get it ready to go to bids and construction within the next fiscal year.
Any questions? Take a motion in a second to approve. Motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith. Any further discussion? Corge Colerole, please.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number fourteen, consider an act upon a resolution amending the city's fire police and non-uniform pay scale to reflect a two percent increase for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Ms. Irvin?
Mayor, council, this is our three pay scales that we go off of, the fire police and non-uniform in your budget that you approved last council meeting. In order to give the two percent COLA, this is raising the scale up two percent. All of them are included in your packet. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions? Council, Vice Mayor Stevens?
Pete and Tony, I just want to tell you guys, please pass along the city staff and everyone else involved in this, how much I truly appreciate it, because I get to deal with them in a lot of different ways with selling houses and stuff, and they come up to the water department, or Mr. Cox back there, if we have to call him, okay, something's going on, or, or the firemen coming to check on things, and just the city staff in, in general, you guys do a wonderful job, and I really appreciate it, and I know this council does too, so thank you. I wish, I wish we could, sometimes I wish this is, I don't think this is enough sometimes, so please pass along to them that we thank them and we appreciate them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Reed, second Vice Mayor Stevens. Any discussion? Corge Colerole, please.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number fifteen, discussion and update on financials.
Mayor and councilman, in front of you is a main financial summary, and year-to-date completed ninety-one percent sixty-seven, and you can see that our general fund revenue is ninety-four point four percent, so which means more than our budget revenue, about two point seven three percent. And our expense is eighty-seven forty-five, so it's lower than our budget, about four point two percent. And the bottom one is the M P W A fund, and our revenue and expenditure is a little bit low, lower than our budget expected. And the, 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 the revenue is under about two point seven percent, and, but our expenditure also under one point nine percent. Yeah. Any question about the revenue? And you can, you can tell that on the general fund, our ending balance is, increased to eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, six twenty-seven. The reason is because of the sales tax. We got a really pretty good sales tax revenue this year.
Mayor and council, what if I could add something real quick? The general fund had actually gotten down to around six hundred thousand dollars, and that was due to some expenditures that we invested in the community that you were all a part of. As you're aware, we try to keep our ending balances at about a million dollars as a general fund, a million dollars in the M P W A. So what you're seeing is a reflection of things were to end right now, where we would be with our general fund, our M P W A. So we have rebuilt these accounts, and the city is in very strong financial position right now.
And the next page is our sales tax revenue graph for the three years, and you can see that the, I already put the June's revenue in it, and you can see the eleven months of the twelve that keep increasing, so it's a good sign, and I hope this will keep doing that, increase our revenue. And the use tax also slightly increased. So this is a good sign too. And next year, I hope that we're going to have the new project, and then all those use tax and the Amazon, I think it will keep growing. And the next page is the M P W A for the water sales, residential, commercial, and the wholesale district water cell.
It's been a wet year, water sales are down.
And the last one is the money in, in our, you know, cash in our, our bank.
Any questions for anyone? Thank you. We are now on to new business, any matter not known or which could not have been recently foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with section three one one point nine, Title Twenty-Five Oklahoma State Statutes.
We do not, Eric.
In that case, we'll go to the city manager's report.
While Ms. Chin is still here, I want to tell you that she has resigned as CFO from the city as of yesterday. And I got to tell you, you know, trying to step into Ms. Irvin's shoes was a big feat to undertake. Ms. Chin did a stellar job of doing that, basically a seamless transition. She is just an outstanding individual, outstanding employee, an outstanding friend. I can't say enough good things about her. I hate to see her leave. She is going back to. She is going back to Durant where she came here from, and, uh, she has a tremendous opportunity down there. But I wanted to personally say thank you for everything you've done. With that, um, want to let you know that one month from today, on July the twenty-fifth, we are going to have our open house at the Carl Albert Federal Building. Uh, that is going to be from four to six P.M. Uh, we will have people there that will be able to take you through the building. Uh, we'll have a depiction of how, uh, some of the first pictures of when that building was being built. It's going to be a pretty interesting tour, and you'll get to see all of the operations of all those departments over there. So we encourage the community to come out and see what we've done with that building, and we kept the historic value of it in place. So the other thing is, is tomorrow at eleven-thirty, uh, is the dedication of the Thunder Court over at Chattock Park. Uh, everybody is invited. We want a huge crowd to be there. Um, the Thunder Girls are going to be here, the mascot for the Thunder Organization. It is a big deal, and we are excited for the kids of this community to have the dedication of this Thunder Court tomorrow. Mayor, you got a big role in it tomorrow. We'll see you there at eleven-thirty, and hopefully everybody else will be able to attend too. Thank you.
Don't expect me to shoot a basketball. We are on to remarks and inquiries by city council, so since you had your hand up, we'll start on that side.
I just had a, a quick question. I didn't, I didn't get the time on the, uh, Carl Albert Federal Building tour.
That is from four to six o'clock on July the twenty-fifth, and we'll be putting out flyers and all kinds of information.
All right, thank you. And, uh, I would, uh, just like to, uh, welcome the new owners of the Whistlestop Bistro. They're calling Whistlestop Bistro Depot, George and Beth Watkins, and it looks like they're going to do a fine job. They're going to do some remodeling and rebranding. And also, people are very appreciative to the city and to the, uh, city, uh, employees for the Clean Slate Program. So I want to acknowledge that, and thank everybody for that.
Councilman Brown?
Well, I want to say, I'm sorry to see this young lady leave. I mean, I was just getting used to you, used to you, and Ms. Irvin, she does a good job, and you know, anybody can go, like, tell people all the time, go on in and look online. This is about as transparent as you can ever get, and I appreciate it. And, uh, Pete, I appreciate you having that done. And, uh, like I said, people go on in and look if they have any questions. If you can't follow this, you can't follow anything.
Thank you.
Councilman Reed? Vice Mayor Stevens?
Uh, Pete, can you give us an update on the Streetscape project, how that's coming along?
Sure, uh, the section that they're working on, they, they've actually broken each section down into about a four-week, uh, transition. Uh, we're in the, the beginning of week three, uh, and they are a little bit ahead of schedule. They fully anticipate having that section, uh, from Main Street down to First Street on the Bank of Oklahoma side, done within that four-week period, and they'll be transitioning straight across the street.
Great, so they, they haven't hidden any snags on anything or anything unexpected so far?
Well, you know, there's snags in everything that you do. And, um, what you do is you adapt, you fix it, you move on. And the nice thing about this organization is they don't dwell on it, they just keep on trucking.
I was just curious, I know that some of this was, it was unknown underneath there, what they were getting into, so I'm glad to hear that they're doing well.
You know, there's boxes that you just wonder why they're there.
I'm sure.
Okay, so, but it's, you know, between Infra- Infrastructure Solutions, uh, Kirk Ridenhour, who's running kind of shotgun on this project here at the city, um, you know, just everybody that's involved in it, it's just a team effort. And when something pops up, it's addressed, taken care of, and we move on. So it's good.
Good.
Councilman Smith?
Pete, what's the latest on the Fourteenth Street Mall? When is that going to?
It's our understanding that the, uh, financing is supposed to close the end of this week, and that the, uh, once that is completed, the property is supposed to be closed on by the fifteenth of July, and it's our understanding that he is ready to issue contracts right after that. We are not here...
The first dirt moving.
July sixteenth.
We'll get a show on, boy.
Soon as the contracts are issued, it'll start working?
I'm hoping that he flies a bulldozer in here, so... It's, it, it should happen rapidly after that. It's our understanding that, uh, well, and we know that the contractor that he's hired to build this facility has already been to McAllister several times. I mean, they're just, everybody's just standing by.
Thank you.
Mayor's comments, uh, just want to say, you know, we're coming to the end of the fiscal year, and we've had, uh, we've had a remarkable year. We are coming in significantly, uh, more money than we budgeted for. We have, uh, I checked yesterday with, uh, with the Saint Louis Federal Reserve, our unemployment rate is three point one percent. Uh, we've got numerous jobs, uh, manufacturing jobs, I think in the last three years, about four hundred jobs at the ammunition depot have gone in. Uh, OSP, Warden, I've been to meetings with him, and he said they will hire, they, they will take all applications that they can get because they need, they need as many people continue hired. So we've, we've had a remarkably good year, and hopefully we can have another next year. But, uh, it, whenever you, you know, we've had a few things, you know, we've had some bumps, we've had some things closed lately, but by far overall, it's been, it's been a phenomenal year. It really, it truly has, and, and things are, are, are looking up for the future as well. We've got the Streetscape going on downtown, we've got the Fourteenth Street coming in. The Choctaws will be finishing their ammunition plant at some point in time, so we, uh, we're sitting pretty good and things are looking good.
Parks, park improvements coming forward.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're using the, the money from the Choctaw Nation for park improvements, and people are really enjoying that. Pride and McAllister is setting up to have, uh, park adoptions, and I think that's taken off pretty well as well. So we're getting, we're getting a lot of good buy-in from the community, and we're having a lot of really good things happen. So that's, uh, that, I guess that's a prelude to my February State of the City speech. So with that, we will recess the council meeting, and I would take the motion to convene as McAllister Airport Authority. Motion to include approval of minutes from June eleventh, twenty nineteen, regular meeting of the McAllister Airport Authority, confirm action taken on city council agenda item A, L fourteen. That's, that's it on that one. Motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith. Any discussion? Cord, your color roll, please.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. I would now take a motion to convene as McAllister Public Works Authority. Motion to include approval of minutes from June eleventh, twenty nineteen, regular meeting of McAllister Public Works Authority, confirm action taken on city council agenda item A, B, L, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith. Any discussion? Cord, your color roll, please.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
I'm saying...